Amy will tell us when we're live. Councilmembers, I'll just share with you, Maurice and I've been working through the agendas and the rolling calendar and trying to figure out what we can do. And we may be coming back to you with an additional Monday night meeting for concept plans only. Otherwise, our June 23 meeting could go on for three days. Everything's getting pushed, but we'll come, we'll let you know as soon as we can figure something out. We really were trying to avoid the last week of June because a lot of people had made plans to not be here that week. And so I'm sorry, it's just, and then this summer Maurice and Anne and Colleen and Junior are going to have a meeting about what, how can we not make this happen? What, what rights do we have to say, you have to spread this out? We're just, we're going to have a discussion because we got caught, we get caught in this bind about having to have certain things on the agenda than, than take a long time. So, and I know having it so that we have two public hearings and then have to wait for a whole nother meeting to vote on something has added to that time as well. So that'll be different probably in the fall, but we will be able to go back to the same kind of routine. All right, Amy, trying to tell me something?
Just giving you one minute.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Pam, the June 2 tentative meeting is a definite meeting now, right?
Yes, so June 2nd and June 16th are both regular meetings now. Well, June, June 2nd is going to be a hybrid meeting, folks, again, it's going to be starting at 6:30. But we've had to add a couple more items on there, so we'll start as a work session and roll into a regular meeting is the plan at the moment. That may change by Friday. We meet all the time on this, trying to figure out how to make.
A meeting on the 16th?
There's a meeting on the 16th.
I don't have any.
We blessed it a month ago, it's rolling updated, so make sure everybody knows we have a meeting every Wednesday until the 30th. No, we don't have it on the 30th. The 23rd.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is insane. And, and do you know when?
Guys, we're live, thank you. All right, everyone, thank you and welcome to the May 26th Town Council meeting. We're glad to have you join us tonight, we have a lot of guests this evening as we have a special agenda. Our meeting tonight is going to start off with honoring our longtime Deputy Manager Flo Miller. We will get to that in a minute because we have some special guests here. But wanted to also let you know that we're going to then move into a conditional zoning for the Aura project, which is at 1,000 MLK Junior Boulevard. And then we have three other items this evening, the special use permit modification for Timberline Office Project, a conditional zoning for the Putt Putt Fund Center in North Chapel Hill, and land use ordinance changes for the Blue Hill District. So those of you who have joined us tonight on Zoom, we're happy to have you here with us, those you watching, we're happy to have you as well. And those watching later, public input is important to us and there are many ways to get involved and connected and share your ideas and thoughts. Speaking up at one of these meetings is one of those ways. And you are welcome to email us or call, all kinds of ways to connect with your town council. All right, I will say this again later, but those folks registering for item number eight, the Aura Project, because we've had so many speakers sign up, we're going to be limiting it to two minutes per person. There was a group that signed up ahead and got permission to have a joint presentation, we'll be hearing from them first. So we know we have that. And then in keeping with our virtual meeting requirements, we have to have a roll call, so as I call your name, please unmute yourself and say, "I am present here," whatever works for you. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Michael Parker.
Yeah.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Boinsy.
Here.
Ms. Goo.
Here.
Mr. Wen.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Segman.
Here.
The mayor is also here, and Ms. Miller, are you here? There's Flo.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're, we're going to start off with honoring our Flo. And she's in the office tonight, I had the opportunity to swing by and see her today. But we're going to be recognizing her and celebrating her as she is retiring at the end of this month after 32 years with the Town of Chapel Hill. And during that 32 years, she's worked with every town department. And I said to say you're going to be missed is an understatement. You are the heart and soul of all the inner workings of our town. And we are, I, we talked today Flo about, we're not even going to know, we don't know that you knew that we don't know until after you're not going to tell us, so. And you have been just such an invaluable support and resource for former mayors, we have a few speaking with us tonight, and members of the council and staff and the public. And you've been a steady right hand to many town managers, and we had a celebration last week where we got to hear from them. People like to say you're quiet, you work quietly behind the scenes, but I like to say that you work effectively behind the scenes with your can do attitude. You're going to get it done. And you've been such a great mentor to so many staff members, to mayors, to interns, to students. Yeah, it's just really been, and so we're excited to have you this evening to, to share our appreciations. We're going to start off and let a few of our former town mayors say hello. We have Mayor Ken Brown and Mayor, and now current Clerk of Courts Mark Kleinschmidt. And we have former Councilmember Ed Harrison with us this evening too, to share a few words so they can turn their cameras on and we will call on Ken Brown first, and then followed by Mark, and then followed by Ed. And then any council members that would like to say a few things, and then I've got a few more things to say to share. So, welcome.
I am honored to be able to say a few words of thanks to one of the Town of Chapel Hill's great public servants. Flo Miller has served this town and, and community for more than three decades. She has brought her incredible intelligence and vitality to too many issues to name here. Flo is one of the hardest workers I have ever known in any setting. It seemed to me when I was in town hall that she never left the building unless it was to go to one of the outlawing, outlying town offices to deal with a problem or to meet with a town employee who needed her much sought after assistance. Her long and diligent service brought a wealth of knowledge of the town's history. She has been in many ways the town's institutional memory. Flo always seemed to me to be an outstanding mentor, not only to the many town employees, but also to its elected officials. She was a mentor to me throughout my time as, as mayor, especially when I started as a true rookie in town government. Her ability to sit stoically through long council meeting was beyond enviable. Yes, rest assured, they were just as long 25 or 30 years ago. I especially remember Flo's outstanding work in connection with the town's bicentennial celebration in 1993. She herded, and I think that's a good word, hundreds of staff and citizen volunteers to pull off one of the great celebrations in this community's history. You could see some of the handiwork on the stones that marked the entry to the town at several points, and there are time capsules below each one. Flo has meant more to this town, its governance and its citizens than we can ever repay. She cared about the staff, she cared about the elected officials, and she cared about all of Chapel Hill's citizens. I'm certain she will carry that care into her retirement. I wish her the very best, thank you Flo.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you for everything.
Our Mayor Mark Kleinschmidt. And Clerk of Court, I'm not sure what, what part of the title.
Welcome. Flo.
Hi, how are you?
Flo, it's so great to see you. And I'm so grateful to be able to share a little bit of time with you and everyone else who's listening here before you take off. You know, you've, you were always my sister from down east. You know, we, we, you and I both have driven that US 70 route more times than we could count to go back to visit. And yeah, there's a special quality, I think, of folks who are from the part of this North Carolina that we're from. And I like to think that you brought the best of eastern North Carolina to Chapel Hill. And I think it came out in so many ways because, you know, when, when Ken talked about you being a resource and, and kind of the historian and the, the institutional memory of the community, I, it comes out, I think, of, of that, of the place that you're from and the people that you're from. Because you exhibited over at least the 14 years that I worked with you, this extraordinary ability to tap in to an understanding of the people around you, whether they're the other employees or the citizens of the community or the elected officials. And you were always able to weave together these various and often dissonant interests to help and helping and helped us like find a path through it. There's something really special in being able to, to bring in all of them, acknowledge everyone's value and still cut away a path to a solution. I remember many times talking with you and I would, I would have some kind of high-flying ridiculous big silly idea. And you were a way that brought me back to earth. You're a grounding force, you were for me and you have been for this community. Without that kind of, of force in operating within our town government, there are so many times I think that he, that both I and the town could have lost their way. But you're an extra, you were an extraordinary helmsman. And I will always be grateful for the mentorship that you offered me. The, the way you helped me keep an eye on what was real, what was possible, and help craft some of the most extraordinary solutions to getting to possible, to get into what was possible that have ever been, that have ever occurred in, in this state. You are, and you are and have been an instrumental part of every success this town can claim ownership of. I know that Ken and Rosemary and Kevin and Jonathan and Pam and every council member that we've served with over the years would affirm just that. Thank you so much for the strength you gave to me, but thank, but thank you even more for that, that's the strength and leadership that you provided the people of this town. I couldn't be more grateful to have served alongside you Flo, thank you so much for giving me that gift.
Thank you so much, Mayor, I appreciate your kind thoughts.
Thank you. Then we have former council member Ed Harrison. Welcome.
Thanks for letting me speak, Pam. It's gives me an opportunity to honor a really notable town employee who kept so much running well for so long and really never sought the spotlight for it. I believe I hold the record for what it's worth for being in office simultaneously with Flo's service, because that was 16 years and day after day of admiring her effectiveness. I'd seen her, I started to come into council meetings kind of early on, it looked like good entertainment when I got here 31 years ago, it has been. And very educational, of course, and she was sitting in the background literally at a table with Sana Loenthall, both reporting with Cal Horton, I think, watching and listening to things very carefully, taking it all in, and she'd remember it all. And I did get, when a council member, of course, she had an open door, so I got to see her as much as the manager. One manager back, Roger Stansel, I remember, gave me a very strong impression when I asked him, did he know anybody here in this government? And he said Flo Miller, just period. And apparently you'd gotten your Master of Public Administration together at Carolina way back. And I'm someone who did want Flo sometimes to get attention when I was on and then chaired the Public Transit Partners. I'd sometimes say, I don't want to proceed on this until we know what Chapel Hill management thinks. And Flo, sitting in the, in the seats with the public, would let us know what management thought, and the meeting had to stop until that was done, and then we proceed from there. Back to more fun, I associate Flo with my good eating. I hope hers too, and certainly one case. Really surprised when I was a council candidate, one night there was a table stacked with little sandwiches, and I guess she'd see me bring food to forums and things like that, or council meetings, council meetings, because I just was fighting off my pre-diabetes. And she said, Ed, you know, you could have one of those sandwiches. And that was very welcoming, when I'm not even a council member. Also, we had one wonderful meal out in Seattle, one of the League of Cities Conferences, where we managed, thanks to her remarkable discipline, to never bring uptown business at all. We only talked about how thinking about eating and diets had changed since we were in our twenties. I think we had an hour of that enjoying wonderful seafood there in Seattle. But I also particularly remember, I think she's so observant, that she would see when my wife Pat was, was with me at some kind of reception, that Pat would go straight for whatever was chocolate or had chocolate in it. And so there'd be some, many where she wasn't with me, and Flo would say, Ed, wouldn't you like to take some of these home to Pat? And hand me a little plate, and I would get together a plate, and I was thinking, this is sort of my wife tax, but Flo now knows I need to pay it. But Flo, it's been wonderful knowing you all these years, and you're always having the clear answer. Because sometimes you don't get that in government. And with, as the institutional memory that people have, I think Brian Litchfield in particular will have to download your memory if he can. I hear you've promised to be available to him and, and anyone else interested in transit. Your knowledge on that is matchless. But anyway, I hope you have fun in eastern, eastern North Carolina, as Mark says you should. I thank you when I go back in, and I will still, and have a great life beyond this, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember, appreciate your kind words.
Okay. Flo, we have a few things for you, and Maurice, our town manager, had agreed to bring them by to your office there.
He's patiently waiting.
Oh bless, thank you Maurice. First, I wanted to hand you your proclamation. We had it framed, we're not going to read all of it, but it says some of the same sediments you've been hearing. But I want, I want to make sure that everyone knows that the Town Council is proclaiming today, May 26th, to be Florentine Miller Day, and encouraging everyone to celebrate Flo, so yay.
Thank you so much.
I will say, I think it's an appropriate day for you, this is known as a lunar eclipse, the red moon today, but also in folklore, it's called the flower eclipse. And we know how much you like to garden, so we have a gift for, for you, and you don't have to unwrap it, it's, it's a box Maurice is going to hand it to you.
I'll show you the box.
It is beautiful, yeah. You're going to love these gardening tools Flo. These are from Cutco, they will last a lifetime, they are well-suited for, and they should do you well in all your gardening that I know you're going to get back to from.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, and then we probably, you probably already have this because I know you already know where everything is in Town of Chapel Hill, but we have a key to the city for you. I think Flo knows.
I love it.
A key to the city of Chapel Hill to use anytime, and often as you like, we'd love to come back.
Thank you, I appreciate this.
And then in keeping with tradition, Flo likes to say, it's not a party without cake.
Yes.
Whole Foods has the best icing. So Jamie Blazer went and got, went to Whole Foods and got you some rose cupcakes. I don't know if you can hold them up so that people can see, but they are beautiful, I got to see them today. They are just stunning, and so we wish you lots of cake in your retirement.
Excellent.
So.
Let me open this. Oh, they're beautiful. Yummy yummy.
Aren't those pretty?
Yes.
You get your Whole Foods, I might have to sneak back by Flo.
Yes, you're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, so, council members, I didn't know if any of you wanted to share a few words, and we will ask Flo to share a few words if she's so willing. Ms. Anderson.
We'll be quick, Flo, you are a model of public service. You are understated and humble, you're also, I think, often underestimated. You make everyone comfortable, you usher everybody in, you make sure everybody has food and a chair. But also you know the budget better than anybody. You, you understand numbers, you understand policy, you stay calm amidst some of the weirdest and wildest meetings I've been in. And you are kind and respectful to everybody and, and value everybody's humanity, so. I just really, I'm going to miss you, I know a lot of people are going to miss you. And I really just hope you have a wonderful retirement, but hopefully we get to see you, especially back in person sometime soon. But I'm sending you lots of virtual hugs and just know that although you are understated, there are many people who appreciate your brilliance and your service.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, I appreciate it. And you'll see me again.
Oh yay, we like that, Mr. Parker.
Yeah Flo, I just want to thank you, you know, I don't want to belabor the point, but you have been just an amazing presence for me. You've been very quietly giving me good advice on more than one occasion and always done it in a way that didn't make me feel like the idiot that I might have been. So just thank you for all you've meant to the town. It's, your influence will, I think, only be fully appreciated when you, when you're gone, as it often is, as often is the case when it's someone as humble and unassuming as you are. But just know that you're leaving a huge hole that we're going to struggle to fill, that you will be missed both as a public servant, but perhaps more importantly, as just the wonderful human being that you are. And so I just want to thank you personally for the help you've given to me, and of course, for the many, many innumerable things you've done for the town we both care so much about.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Parker.
Mr. Boinsy.
Hi Flo, I'm so thankful that I got to, you know, get in on my time on council, you know, even though it was in your last years with the town. You know, I've been blessed to have you in my life and to have you as, as a guide for me during my time on the council. And congratulations. I'm going to miss you, but I know we're all going to miss you, but I will, I will miss you especially, and I'm hoping that we'll see each other in person soon, and you know, I want to introduce you to my new twins. And so I'm looking forward to that day when I introduce you to my folks.
I am, and I'm looking forward to that day too, you know, I like other, other people's babies.
All right, well Flo, do you want to share, oh, Ms. Ryan, I'm sorry, didn't want to leave a bay out.
Oh, we have to have a chance, so Flo, we already spoke at the Transit Partners Meeting, so I won't repeat that there, but it's just, one of the hardest things I think in public service is to be effective, and you make it look easy. So if you can somehow share that with us, we would very much appreciate it. But just an amazing record of service to the town, the town is a better place because you cared about it and you took care of it for us. And we will really miss you, and I will continue to try to live up to the high standards that you have set for public service and for council behavior, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay. Flo, you want to share a few words back with us?
Yes, and I'll be brief, I know you have a long meeting. Thank you so very, very much for this wonderful tribute. And a big thank you also to those making comments and for expressing well wishes, they mean a great deal to me. I am humbled and greatly moved by your kindnesses, thoughtfulness and support. I have often said that it has been my good fortune to work for the Town of Chapel Hill over the past 31 years. I thank you for your leadership and caring about this entire community as you work through difficult issues. Your jobs are not easy, and we know that you sometimes work long, long hours. I have the greatest of respect for all of you. I am very grateful for the opportunity also to work with Town Manager Maurice Jones as he guides the staff in implementing the values and policies of the council. Together, we all make a great team, and I am proud to have been a member of that team. It goes without saying that I will miss seeing you all on a regular basis, and I will not forget you. I wish you all the best as you continue to do the work of Chapel Hill Town Government, and I commend you for doing a great job under all circumstances. Again, thank you very much and be blessed.
Well, thank you Flo, and you've heard a lot of the same words that I've heard from, from many folks about your amazing qualities. You have been an amazing public service, an amazing individual. And I personally am going to miss that optimism and friendly greeting you always have when I come into the office or after meetings, you're like, it's going to work out, you're going to see, it's going to work out fine, Mayor. And I just, I love that about you, I love that whenever I'm there, you're there too, with words of wisdom and guidance. And Flo, like I said, it's an understatement to say you're going to be missed, you will be missed, but we also know you well deserve your time, some Flo time, do the things you love. And we hope you'll stay engaged and just, Flo, job well done.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. And thank you for all these wonderful gifts.
You have to go by and see her table sometime, folks, she's got a lovely table full of gifts, well-deserved gifts. And I can't wait to see you with your office because that is a treasure trove of history.
That's my next big, big task.
Next big day. Well Flo, thank you so much, and we hope you'll be able to spend Wednesday evenings doing something, going to bed a little earlier probably.
Thank you.
We appreciate you and the job you have done to make Chapel Hill a better place, thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Well, I'll still be here for the rest of the meeting.
Of course you will.
I am going to try a cupcake.
You should, like, really close up my camera.
Thank you very much.
And we did get, I should have said, we got many notes from former council members, and we will put those together for you and get them to you.
I look forward to it, and thank you all again.
Oh, thank you. All right, we need to get back to it, this was the fun part, we've done anyone sad too, but a few announcements, just a few, Monday is Memorial Day, and is our custom, we will have a proclamation we put out there on social media calling out everyone to honor members of the armed forces who have lost their lives in service to our country. The American Legion Post Six will be holding a ceremony at their new post on Highway 54 at 11:00 AM. And the Orange County Peace Coalition will hold a virtual commemoration for victims of war at 2:00 PM. There's also a sunrise service, I believe, at the war memorial that Mr. Parker is going to be representing our town at, and another celebration in the afternoon to check the town calendar for all the Memorial Day events. The council meeting for next week on June 2nd will begin with the budget work session and move on to several regular business items, this meeting will begin at 6:30. And we also have the Council Committee on Economic Sustainability on Friday next week, June 4th at 8:00 AM. We'll be discussing the technology for the East Rosemary parking deck and police station site, and we'll also receive an update from the Downtown Partnership. And we're hoping to continue our meetings virtually through the end of June. In the meantime, I did want to share, I love how this community cares when, when tragedy strikes, folks, we pull together. And I'm, I'm sure you were, there was a fire in an apartment complex in Carboro, and Elizardo Posato was one of the victims of that apartment fire. Luckily, he and his dog escaped safely, but he lost everything in that fire. And he does so much in public service for others that a GoFundMe page was started to help raise funds to help him recover what he lost if that can be possible. And so I encourage folks to take a look at that and give to someone who gives so much to community, and I love that we care, and it's, it's the GoFundMe page is doing well. So I encourage others to contribute towards that, and we wish him well, and we need to get him back up and going, so there we go. All right, are there other announcements from council members? Okay, then we will move to items, sorry, public comments on items that are not on the printed agenda this evening, and we have a couple of petitions upfront, I don't know if people are here for those petitions or not, we actually sent one last meeting, the We actually sent one last meeting, the request to allow miniature pigs was actually adopted last meeting, but I wasn't sure if Edson Freeman was here or not. This evening to speak on that.
I believe he is.
He is. Good, well, welcome. We'll bring you in.
He is here, as is, uh, Mary Cummings, follow Mr., following Mr. Freeman.
And we'll bring those folks both in, please, and if there's anyone else wishing to speak on items not on the printed agenda this evening. Please raise your hand and we will call you in. Welcome, Mr. Freeman.
Hello, hello. Um, happy Flo Day, Flo Miller Day. Um, my name is Edson Freeman. Um, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for considering our petition. Did you say the petition was adopted last week?
We, so what we do is we refer the petition to the mayor and manager to chart a path for a petition and a response to the petition. Um, and that's what happened last week. So that's what we do with our petitions normally and we weren't sure if you were presenting or not. And we'd already had it, the request in writing, so we sent it on, um, to, through that process.
Okay, um, I'll keep my comments brief then. Um, there's already been a little bit of media coverage around it anyway, so we were not really expecting that, but. Um, a couple of years ago, my wife Stephanie and I had to rehome our dogs due to her allergies getting worse and worse. Uh, we were, we're really sad. We had, we have other pets, but we missed that companionship of dogs and. So we did a little research and we discovered that there are some small pig breeds that are intelligent and friendly and hypoallergenic and. Bread more for companionship than for the slaughterhouse and so. Um, while we understand the concerns some people may have, such as potential for odor and noise and other nuisance issues. We feel like these are things that have already, that are already addressed by existing laws for both conventional and exotic pets. Um, we'd like to request that the town consider allowing no more than two pet pigs on property smaller than four acres. So long as they don't create issues for neighboring residents or properties. And we'd suggest requiring that, um, pigs be given all recommended vaccinations as well as requiring that they be spayed or neutered. Small breeds such as potbelly or coony coony pigs are comparable to large dogs in a lot of ways. And they're far better suited for small spaces than conventional farm hogs. And so we'd ask you to follow in the footsteps of neighboring communities such as Raleigh and Durham in allowing small pig breeds as pets. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have Mary Cummings. And you wanna share a visual or some sort?
Yes, yes, um, I'm a professor, so I'm an expert at slides. Uh, so thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. I'm a resident of Chapel Hill in a Meadowmont and I come to you because I have been trying to work with the city for a couple of years. Over issues of around gas powered leaf blowers. They're quite noisy in multiples and it's been quite a problem over here. Uh, and so because I'm a professor of electrical and computer engineering and also of human factors, I have acoustic equipment that I can measure sound. And I measured sound inside my house with leaf blowers outside my house and the readings were over eighty dB, which are. One thousand times over the city limit of fifty dB. And so I want to share with you why that's a problem and the kinds of problems that these leaf blowers can cause. I, I promise I won't get too professorial on you. What I wanna point out, and this is a recent study from Harvard. Is that these are the three frequency components that come from gas powered leaf blowers and these are the ones that were used here. And so there are, um, high to low, high to low frequencies. And, uh, this is from zero to five hundred feet, so at about two tenths of a mile. So the high frequency components are never below the city's limits. No, even at about a quarter mile away, they are still not below the city's limits. But the high frequency components are the annoying part, the really dangerous part are these low frequency components. That was, that's what causes pain. And indeed, I've left a quote here from the authors, there are tangible health problems that are caused by the noise. It's not just noise, it's the vibration that's hurting your ears. Oops, I'm sorry, I didn't get it full screen. And then let me show you, um. There are also environmental concerns. Uh, there, this quote from California who the, almost the entire state has banned gas powered leaf blowers. Uh, one hour emits enough pollution compared to driving a Toyota over a thousand miles. This is just one hour of leaf blowers and I've left some other information here that you can read from the EPA. Uh, and I've left, uh, I'm happy to provide these slides to you. But I think the bottom line is that I know that the hundred and twenty-five people who signed the petition that I recently sent to you. We want change. The countless towns and cities across America who have successfully banned gas powered leaf blowers. They've made this critical change and I believe it is now time for the city of Chapel Hill to make this change and improve the quality of life for its amazing residents. Thank you.
Thank you. A move we receive and refer?
It's a move by Ms. Anderson and second by Mr. Parker that we receive and refer this petition to the mayor and manager. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Boynce.
Aye.
Ms. Goo.
Aye.
Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Stegman.
Aye.
The mayor says aye as well. Thank you for bringing your petitions. Were there any other folks wishing to speak on items not on the printed agenda?
There are not.
Okay, we will move to consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
The move by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Ryan. We will do a roll call vote and then I'll make a comment. So here we go. Mr. Parker.
Aye.
Ms. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Boynce.
Aye.
Ms. Goo. Mr. Wynn.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Stegman. And the mayor says aye as well. What I wanna say is it's exciting and there's many people tonight listening to the, um, Aura project. But, um, on the consent agenda was awarding the bid for the multi-year, the pedestrian and bike improvements along Estes Drive. We've been waiting for this for a long time. Our staff has worked very diligently in getting this product, project shovel ready. And then we were hit with the COVID and the DOT, um, with, they couldn't disperse the funds. Funds have now been promised to be released. And we can award this bidding, get started. This project will take a while and there will be some traffic concerns and, um, updates that go along with. Implementing this project, but we hope to get started shortly, but very exciting that this has come to fruition, your tax dollars at work. So we're very, very pleased. Um, that it's going to be from, I believe, I always say it's from Casville to MLK, but I'm, I'm. Get the parameters later on that, but we'll be putting lots of announcements out of it. So there we go. All right. So that brings us to item number eight, which is to continue the public hearing on the application for conditional zoning. The Aura development at one thousand MLK Junior Boulevard. Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Judy Johnson with our planning department and I just wanna say I'm joined here with a, our staff team, including Alicia Goldstein from our Stormwater. Uh, Lauren Clark from our housing team, Donnie Rhodes with Police, uh, Bergen Waterson with Transportation Planning. And Chuck Edwards with NC DOT, as well as Craig Scheffler, who is the traffic consultant with HNTB. So hopefully we'll be able to handle and address, uh, some of the concerns and questions that we hear. So as the mayor said, this is a continuation of the public hearing. Uh, tonight, our recommendation is that the public hearing be continued, uh, receive comment and, uh, consider closing this public hearing this evening. Uh, the comment period would remain open for a twenty-four hour period. Uh, and those comments can be shared with, uh, make our planning at townatchapelhill.org. Uh, and then make a motion to consider the application for action at the June sixteenth meeting. Just to briefly, uh, share this slide, we shared, um, with most every project that comes through to just, uh, go through our process. And it, as we said, this is the continuation of the public hearing. It has been reviewed by town staff as well as our advisory boards and commissions. And then, uh, the next step after this evening would be, uh, anticipate council action. A brief overview of the project, it's about sixteen acres. Uh, they are requesting a conditional zoning for this project. It's currently zoned residential one. The applicant is proposing a office institutional three conditional zoning district, uh, to construct about four hundred and eighteen dwelling units. And approximately fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space. And, uh, about sixty-six percent of the site, as, as our land use management ordinance. Uh, defines it is shown as impervious. Just wanna, um, walk you quickly through the site. I think we all know where it is, the northeast corner of, um, Martin Luther King and Estes Drive. Across the street from the Amity Church and near the YMCA. Uh, to the, um, left of this screen, you can see Martin Luther King is running down the side, Estes along the south part of the property. Uh, just a quick blow up of the site, just, I think you've seen this before a couple of times, just wanna point it out. Uh, there is a resource conservation district, uh, associated with the intermittent stream along the southeast portion of the property. I'm not gonna go into discussion on the site plan. I believe the applicant will can cover that, uh, in detail, but. Just showing that there to make sure everybody knows the project, uh, and is familiar with the site plan. Since the, um, initial public hearing back, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we've added a, a couple of conditions to the ordinance. Uh, there's one regarding a potential traffic signal at the intersection of Estes and Somerset Drive. Uh, future bike share station, this would be associated with the proposed bus rapid transit along Martin Luther King. Um, uh, improvements to, uh, a cost share with the developer for a bus rapid transit station. Uh, and, uh, one on commercial spaces, uh, adding some flexibility to that commercial space. Uh, right now, as I said, it's about fifteen thousand square feet and this would, uh, give them some flexibility to increase that by a hundred percent. If the option comes forward for them. And then the, uh, the last stipulation on there, which is a modified stip is to, um. Added some condition to this one about the, uh, culvert running under Estes Drive and this culvert is. Uh, pretty much close to where that resource conservation district comes forward on the southeast portion of the site. Couple of the comments that we heard at the public hearing were regarding affordable housing, which I believe the applicant is here. And is, uh, will be addressing as part of their presentation. As I said, Lauren Clark is here, uh, with, from our housing. And, um, I think you all received this, um, uh, presentation or the, uh, proposal before you, um. And I think a little bit earlier this evening, so staff has done some preliminary work on it, but we're not at the point where we're ready to make a recommendation. But we would be bringing that back to you at, uh, possibly the June meeting. A couple of other things we heard at the public hearing was regarding traffic. I'm gonna discuss a little bit of that. Uh, and then Stormwater and, uh, Alicia Goldstein will, um, provide some detail on that. So a couple of the things that we heard about, uh, the, um. At the public hearing regarding, uh, pedestrian and bicycle safety was along Estes Drive. And, um, as the mayor said earlier this evening, uh, the bid was awarded for the, this project. Uh, we do believe that this will add a substantial, uh, improvements to bike and pedestrian safety along this corridor with. Uh, bike lanes in both directions as well as sidewalks along both directions. Uh, the portion of the, on this slide here that you're seeing, you can see this is the cross section of the proposal. This is somewhat of illustrative, it's not, um, definitive, but the Aura project would be associated with that taller building on the right-hand side of the screen. We did wanna briefly kinda point out a couple of the, uh, improvements associated or pedestrian improvements that are out there today. Or will be, uh, proposed out there. So, uh, you know that we have the, um, the two, uh. Crosswalks on Martin Luther King, which exists today. These are the, the, um, rectangular rapid flash beacons. The one where you push the cross, the button and the lights come on. Uh, so there's two existing there. The Towns Project will put in those, you can see there's three that come in. So the intersection of Martin Luther King and Estes will have pedestrian crossings as part of this project on all four legs. Right now, we only have the leg from, uh, if you're walking northbound on, uh, Martin Luther King crossing Estes. But the other three legs will, uh, have crosswalks and, uh, pedestrian lights installed as part of the town project. The Aura Project will be installing the, um, the cross crossing there that's shown in blue. This will be similar to the other, uh, to the ones we have out on Martin Luther King today. So those, we believe, uh, along the Aura, um, crosswalk along with the ones that will be put in with the town project. Will provide quite a bit of traffic, um, pedestrian and bicycle safety along this corridor. The question had come up a little bit earlier, I think at the public hearing about access for the, um, proposed BRT station. Which you can see that we know where the crossing is there for Shadowwood, there's where we have the crosswalk there today. This for the interim period is where that, um, bus station is, bus stop will be located. As part of the BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit project, I believe that that station would be moving southward closer to the intersection. And as that improvement takes place associated with the Bus Rapid Transit system. Uh, sidewalks would be extended along that, that corridor there. So for folks, uh. Traveling southbound on the, the bus along Martin Luther King from the Aura site. Uh, presently, they would walk to the north and cross at the Shadowwood Apartments where that crosswalk is. Uh, in the future, uh, as the Bus Rapid Transit project, um, uh, becomes operational. They could either go out to the intersection of Martin Luther King and Estes and cross there at the, with the pedestrian light or continue. I don't know about the, what's it say? I'm not sure if that, uh, pedestrian light would remain at the, the northern part for Shadowwood. But, um, I know Bergen, uh, Waterson is here and I, she may know more about that and we can certainly follow up with her. So I'm going to turn over to, uh, Alicia with our Stormwater to walk through some of the, uh, questions that we've heard about the Stormwater. Um, and as I said, when we come back to council questions, we do have, uh, Chuck Edwards with DOT and, uh, Craig Scheffler. Uh, with, uh, HNTB as well as Bergen and, uh, Donnie Rhodes, who can help. Address probably most questions regarding pedestrian and bicycle, uh, traffic and safety through this corridor. So. With that, I'll turn it to Alicia.
Good evening, Council. Um, I'm here to provide an overview of the Stormwater Plan and how the site is meeting the town regulations. So as a review, the town regulations for Stormwater are in the Land Use Management Ordinance, Section five point four point six. And the general performance criteria outlined below are addressing, uh, water quality, runoff volume and runoff rate. Hopefully you guys have seen these all before. The annual, uh, water quality requirement is for the total suspended solids. And they're met by providing a approved stormwater device according to the state design manual. The runoff volume is required, uh, for the two-year, twenty-four-hour storm event. Such that the post-development volume does not exceed the pre-development runoff volume. When, uh, neither reuse or infiltration is practical or allowable on the site due to site conditions. The volume retained would be discharged between two to five days as required by state regulations. The last performance criteria in the town regulations is regarding runoff rates. These runoff rates are required for any flow leaving the site. And they're meant for the one-year, two-year and twenty-five-year twenty-four-hour storm events. I have listed here what those design storm depths are, which are taken from the NOAA Atlas, which is what we based our criteria on. And it's the industry standard. Next slide. This map illustrates the existing conditions on site. Currently, there are a total of six point of analysis that we're now, so analyzed for the existing conditions. I've highlighted the three that are gonna focus on are consistent between, uh, pre-development and post-development. The other, uh, point of analysis, because of changes to the grading, uh, the water will actually go towards those three highlighted. Uh, point of analysis, one, five and six. Next slide. So this is the post-development, uh, scenario submitted. As you can see now, uh, the basins have shifted. Everything in the basin circled by blue is directed to the Stormwater Control Measure that's also identified in blue. And everything in the basin that's green is going into the Stormwater Control Measure marked by A. These Stormwater Control Measures are a combination sand vaulter, which is to meet the water quality requirement and underground detention vault. These will be in series with each other and the arrows indicate where they will be discharged to. The two points for Stormwater Control Measure A and B converge at the point of analysis A. Which is the culvert that was mentioned as a condition in Judy's presentation. Point of analysis five and six on the north side. Point of analysis five and six on the north side, those are small drainage areas for landscapes. Between the landscape areas between the driving lane and the edge of the property and those will discharge to the north. Next slide. These are the values that have been vetted and verified according to the Stormwater Impact Analysis that was submitted to me during the process. They show that for the pre-development and the post-development at each point of analysis, the peak flow is less than the. The peak flow for the post-development is less than the peak flow from the pre-development for the one, two and twenty five year twenty four hours from events. Going to. Go to the next slide. This slide is the last time was about the peak flow, this is about the runoff volume. This is to show that the site modeled three scenarios, the pre-development, the post-development and post-development SEM, Stormwater Control Measures. So the site has to retain the storm for up to two days in order to slowly release it. And that is in order to provide enough volume for the subsequent storm events. And so the volume is being retained through a combination of the forest nature and the sand filter as well as the volume. And everything is controlled through orifice that release the flow at a specific rate. Such that it doesn't exceed what currently leaves the site. Next slide. And so there's a lot of questions about impervious and peak storage and there's a lot of ways to address this. I thought it would be best to provide a little overview of the different types of Stormwater Control Measures on site. And how they can provide different benefits. Many sites actually use a combination of what's considered both gray and green infrastructure, gray infrastructure. Is typically the detention and sand filter, those provide a lot of storage. They're easy and to build underground in order to maximize amount of billable area and they can be controlled and maintained. Green infrastructure are dependent on infiltration capacity in soils. But they add redundancy to the system, provide climate resiliency, they can be adapted based on conditions and can wait peak flow. And also provide equal services benefits beyond just Stormwater. I will be here for the rest of the evening to take any questions.
And that concludes our presentation again, just as our standard slide at the end that we're recommending you consider. Continue the public hearing this evening, hear comments and then close the public hearing and then continue to receive those comments for twenty four hours. And make a motion to consider this application at your June sixteenth meeting. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, I know the developer also has a presentation, so we're going to wait for our clarifying questions until after both. Presentations, please, and Mr. Jewell, see you got your camera on, so.
Thank you, Mayor, is it my turn?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, Dan Jewell again with CJT, our our whole team is here to get to begin this evening to help you. With any any questions you might have as follow up, what I'd like to do if I can is share a. Relatively brief presentation. What I'd like to do is talk about. The the things we've heard and the things we've done. Based on the the comments from you last meeting and and subsequent to that. So I will proceed. So just to reiterate. Where we've been since the original concept plan review and the advisory boards. You all asked for a functional Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and SD's Drive intersection. Which we have gone to great extent to meet and I believe the all of the traffic. Studies have confirmed that. You're looking for a transit supportive development with less parking. Which we are providing, we'll talk about parking in a little bit. You're talking about want us to do a a green project, our buildings use twenty five percent less energy than the building code, ten percent less than. Ashray ninety point one and thirty five percent less water usage. You asked for a central gathering space for community events, we have we have provided that and we have provided more. You've asked for more open space and and now twenty three percent of the site is in some type of open space. And you've asked for playgrounds, which which of course we've also provided. You asked to provide affordable rentals, which which we have done, we'll talk about that in a minute as well. You've asked for for sale housing product, which we are providing. You've asked for mixed use buildings with residential above and as you remember from the plan, our buildings along Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard are in fact that. You've asked for more commercial space and you remember at the last meeting, we we committed to. Agreeing to additional commercial space and making some of our ground floor spaces convertible so that if the demand is there in the future and we hope it will be. That that we can change those to commercial spaces. You asked for family friendly three bedroom apartments and as much underground parking as possible to free up green space, which we have done. Specifically on May twelve, you asked for several things. One of the big ones was a clarification on the building's relationship to SD's. And a clarification on the streetscape dimensions. So this is the slide we showed last time, which which does accurately represent the the widths of the the tree yard. The bicycle path, the sidewalk and the buildings that we are proposing, but we didn't think this did justice because. Only the plan view and some dimensions will actually show you how the articulation of the building actually makes this. Little more generous. So the plan, as you know, along SD's, these are the buildings that we're talking about, the the apartment buildings, the four story apartment buildings. Notice all of the articulation, I'm going to zoom into that right now and again, you can see. That the buildings are not parallel to the street, they are canted off at an angle. And there are various and sundry spaces created to 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 break up the not only the 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 green areas of the building. But also to make those building blocks smaller, so we have building blocks that are oh roughly. Two hundred, two hundred and thirty, in some cases only a hundred and fifty feet long to make it appear that they are are smaller buildings than they. Then they actually are, but if you specifically look at at the spaces in between. The the trail, the sidewalk, the curb and the front of the building, it it varies greatly. And I'll show a slide in a minute where we talk about that. So what we did is we we generated some elevations, Judy showed a nice one in her presentation a few moments ago. We think this one is is a little more illustrative, so these are taken at various locations, you can see in the bottom inset there. Cross section there, there, there and there, that just shows the relationship of of SD's. The bicycle and pedestrian trail system that we are proposing, which specifically. What we are showing at the moment is a five foot street yard, a five foot verge, let's say to plant trees in. We're showing a six foot bicycle path and we are showing a five foot sidewalk. Then we have the 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 landscape areas, some private courtyards in some areas and the building and. These dimensions vary from, there's there's a couple of spots where we get within maybe twelve to fifteen feet at the very point. Of the edge of the sidewalk, but in most places, these these dimensions vary from thirty feet to as much as eighty feet from the. Back of the curb to the face of the building. We know there's been quite a bit of conversation about whether we have an appropriate width of the of the trail system shown there. There are, there's a, there's a slightly wider width shown on the trail system. East of Somerset Drive. What we are proposing is something that we think reflects more of a a transition to that urban edge as we get close to. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and specifically, we can certainly provide a little bit more room where we are. East of the SD's driveway on the project. But we do think it's appropriate to maybe get a little bit narrower as we as we get down along this frontage and and toward. MLK, but for this evening, what 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 we'd really like to focus on is. Is the proximity of the building appropriate to SD's Drive? We think it is because we have multiple layers of land landscaping, double street trees on both sides of the trail and that sort of thing. And perhaps the best path forward on this, if that's okay with you, is to meet with the Towns Urban Planner. And to meet with your bike pad transportation folks and have them work with us to come up with the appropriate cross section for the street, street yard. The sidewalk and the greenway trail, we would be more than happy to to do that. On May twelve, you asked for the affordable house townhouses to be on site, every one of the council members asked for that. And a different mix of uses for the eighty and sixty five percent AMI rentals. So if you remember our proposal of a few weeks ago, it was fifty two affordable units total. Forty seven affordable rental apartments at a fifty fifty mix of eighty and sixty five percent AMI. And five for sale residences off site. We would assist in the construction of affordable housing units off site. We heard you and what we have come back with is this proposal. Keep in mind that moving the affordable townhouses onto the property rather than off the property. Then takes that equal number of units. Out of our revenue stream and you know, as as you can imagine, the the affordable townhouses and affordable units are all. Constructed and sold or rented for less than it actually costs to build them and the revenue that you generate. So what we would propose to do is this, we would propose to actually have seven affordable townhouse units on the site. These would be affordable at eighty percent AMI. And then what we're offering and we'd like to get your 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 good input on. Is is an option of different mixes of eighty percent and sixty five percent AMI. So you can see if we do the. Roughly the fifty fifty mix, we end up with a total of forty affordable units. If we end up with the slightly weighted toward the. Sixty five percent AMI mix, so thirty at eighty, seventy percent at at sixty five percent AMI, we can do thirty six units. And the third option would be to do all sixty five percent AMI units on site and we would propose to do. Twenty three of the affordable apartment units at sixty five percent and still do the seven for sale units on site. The rentals again will be constructed in the same proportion as the market rate units. In addition, on May twelve, you asked for space for future bike share, yes, we are committing for future bike share space out near the BRT. Space for ride share, pickup, drop off, etc., yes, we are committing to doing that, I'll talk about that in a second. You've asked for us to look at reducing parking, we're trying and here's how we're we're trying. What I'd like to first reiterate is that our parking proposal is well on the low side of. Standard suburbia, Town and Chapel Hill, Men's and Max's and more in line with the Blue Hill District. So you can see we're providing apartment, the apartment parking. At at a lower rate, the townhouse parking at two per unit, the restaurant parking at. Seventy for the which where the town standards are sixty nine to a hundred, we're only providing seventy. Retail, the town standards would be twenty five to thirty eight, Blue Hill would be twenty three to thirty eight, we're only providing thirty. So we have a total of six hundred and fifty parking spaces, which is at the very low end of the Men's for Chapel Hill, slightly above that. And close to the low ends of the closer to the low end than the high end of the Blue Hill District. And you know, one of the reasons that we're 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 asking for this is that, you know, again, there are. Always financing demands to make this work, but I think one of the other things that we have committed to do to you and the other advisory boards. Is that that main level, that upper level of the 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 parking table. In the middle of the apartment block, we would commit to converting that slowly as to other uses than parking. As parking demand wanes, as we all hope it will. Also, on the heels of that, we heard a comment, a couple of comments at the meeting a few weeks ago. About not only the you know, the the proximity of the parking adjacent to our our green space. But also can we do additional additional reduction of parking, so what we what we can do and what we will commit to is this. There are sixteen parallel surface parking spaces total. On either side of the the central, Central Park, the long, large green space we have. By the way, this green space, we've measured it, it's twice as big acreage wise as the green spaces Southern Village, just want to put that in perspective. So what we would, what we would like to do is this and what we'd like to propose to you, the those spaces which are highlighted in the the red ovals. We will, we will. Not use those for long term parking at all. What we will do is say those are going to be our ride share, those will be our drop off and deliveries for Amazon, FedEx, UPS, groceries, pharmacy. Things of that nature. And also those become perfect places for when there's an event that calls for food trucks, that would be a great place for the food trucks to line up as well, so. We would be removing sixteen permanent, surface permanent parking spaces from our equation. And instead converting those into short term uses for all of the things that we think we heard at the at the meeting. Two weeks ago. Also on May twelve, you asked for enhanced Stormwater Management, funding toward the BRT station, the connection to Somerset. And a stoplight on SD's Drive. You saw Alicia's good presentation a few minutes ago about the mechanics of the the Stormwater. By the way, the you know. We 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 provide Stormwater calculations at this phase of project to prove that it will work. But I think we all know that those there will be much more detailed calculations done. When we get to the zoning compliance permit phase of the project and the and the construction plans. And 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 with that, what we are committing to meeting is this, based on what we heard a few weeks ago. We will design our Stormwater. Management system to reduce the one hundred year peak flow to the existing rate. And the strategies to achieve that and exceed the performance standards will include those things that we heard again at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. And that is in addition to our underground system, we will provide, we will, we will include a. A kit of parts of of above ground measures which could include pervious paving systems. Could could include. Rain gardens, infiltration areas, that sort of thing, so surface measures that are not only visible, but as one of the council members said, promote. Infiltration and 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 even education, because those things would be visible. To the public and people out there and they would know what it's all about, so we will capture, filter and controlled release to that one hundred year. Peak flow rate. We are committing funding toward the BRT station, you saw that, the hundred thousand dollars and we would like to be. Part of the design to complement the Aura architecture, we are committing to providing an easement. To the Rumel property to the S at what at east, so if at such point in the future, the council decides that a a road connection to Somerset from Aura. Is desired, it can be built and the easement will already be there. And there was also some some conversation about providing a stoplight on SD's Drive, either at Somerset. Or at the project driveway on Summer on on SD's. And and since there will be more usage, more traffic at our driveway than there will on Somerset. What we would, what we would offer is this, that we will, we will fully fund and install a stoplight at. The Aura SD's entrance if approved by NC DOT, there's always that factor. If though, at the end of the day, it's determined that Somerset is the better location for the. The the traffic light, then we would. Offer to fund our proportional share of that traffic light based on the traffic that we are, we would put into it. And that the adjacent properties would would put into it. So I'm going to wrap here and to summarize. This proposal does manage to solve the transportation issues that for previous concept plans on the project were not. Through minimizing parking fields. Through minimizing parking fields, putting an acre of parking underground, putting stormwater management underground, most of it now, based on what I said, we're, I've been able to keep almost a quarter of the site in open space. The town now benefits from affordable apartments and seven for-sale affordable townhouses on this site. We've attempted to address the other questions and concerns we heard from you last meeting. And most importantly, as I said last time, we're providing many of those third places envisioned in the Central West Plan, including community-scale retail, great community gathering spaces, a connected network of sidewalks, trails, a density appropriate for the site and is transit supportive to us to help contribute to the success of the proposed VRT line. So with that, we do look forward to additional questions or comments you have this evening. And we know there will be public comments coming on. I, I have a unusual request though, and that is this. If, if any of the, if the public wants to show any images, we, we saw a flyer that went around yesterday that really blew some of the imagery out of scale. Somebody stretched some building heights and made them look higher than they actually are. And we would, we would ask if anybody shows any exhibits, that they be accurately shown relative to scale, rendering and things of that nature. So with that, we would respectfully request at the conclusion of this hearing this evening that you close the public hearing and let us work out those last stipulation commitment details with, with town staff. So again, thank you as always for your time and we're here to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you. I'm expecting full screen. All right, we're going to do clarifying questions, but I'm going to take a moment to do a list first. I've been working with council members and gathering concerns together to ask, and you've addressed several of them, so thank you for that. And some of these questions will need to be answered by our staff, but others by the developer as well. And they're not actually in a particular order because you went in different order, so I'm going to come back. To, safety was a huge concern. Having a traffic light was something the council was very interested in. I guess I need to ask our staff, how would it be determined whether the traffic light would be at the Aura entrance or the Somerset entrance? And the question revolves around this. We know that having a light will actually allow pedestrians to cross safely, more so than a flashing pedestrian walkway will also allow for more left turns either in or out of Somerset or the Aura project, or even Phillips Middle School along there. How will it be discerned? And do we need to be concerned with where, or does that a decision that happens purely at DOT site? And I don't know if there's someone here that can answer that.
So I'm hoping our, one of our traffic experts, probably Chuck Edwards with NC DOT, would be able to help answer that question.
Is he, is he here? I know he was planning on being with us.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm looking to see if I see him.
Okay. We can always come back to that, but that was a question that we wanted to know.
Excuse me, Mayor, I do see him.
Great.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll start by asking if you can hear me okay.
We can hear you and thank you for joining us tonight. We know it was a last-minute request, but we wanted to, I, I hope you heard the question. How, how was it determined? And is it solely your decision, or do we have input to that?
Yes, ma'am. So I'll, I'll start by saying that we have worked closely with town staff as we always do on this, on review of this development. We have reviewed the traffic impact study that was prepared by VHB. We've done that. I've done that personally and also our experts in our congestion management unit have looked at that. And we have provided back to the town and the applicant our requirements for road improvements, which pretty much align with the recommendations for road improvements in that study. That study did mention signals. And what they indicated was that the, a signal either at the Aura entrance or any of the other intersections in the study that were not currently signalized did not meet these warrants for installation of a traffic signal as established by the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is the national standard. There's a number of different warrants that the MUTCD prescribes, and they indicate that at least one and typically more, multiple of those warrants would have to be met. Again, the, the study did not indicate that a signal would be warranted at that site access, or like I said, any of the other intersections, based on the volumes that were used in the analysis for any of the, either the existing, the future no build or the build scenarios. With, with that said, we do understand there's a lot of interest in signalization there. And certainly NC DOT, as we've expressed to town staff, would be amenable to considering a signal in the future with the additional, addition of traffic. And with an appropriate study to show that it was warranted. As far as where a signal would best be located, if, if it met warrants, a signal at the Somerset intersection would be preferred and actually be better because of its distance away from the existing signal at MLK Boulevard and SD's Drive. The Aura access on SD's Drive is frankly too close. You can run into some operational problems with having signals that are too close and essentially conflicts because of that. So if a signal were to be warranted in the future at Somerset Drive and SD's Drive, we would certainly be amenable to looking at that.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. We, we actually, those who lived experience over there, that it's already an issue. It might not meet the warrant level, but turning left is considerable issue over on SD's Drive. So thank you for joining us. Another safety concern was on MLK, and I don't know, we think we've talked much in depth about that. There's supposedly an island that will go in on MLK in front of the right-in, right-out-only part of the Aura project. Wanting to know two things. One, what does that do to the stacking of people wishing to turn left off of MLK onto SD's Drive? And two, is it actually wide enough to provide pedestrian refuge for people trying to cross to get to the BRT station on the other side? So can you share with us? I'm not sure, Judy, who that would be.
Say, I was wondering if Dan would have a response to that to start.
So if I understand, it's, it's, it's the, it's the median in MLK, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. We weren't anticipating being able to do left turns in or left turns out at the Aura driveway. So I don't think that really affects what we were planning to do, nor the, nor the TIA. Did I?
No. It's about the median that actually is going in to block people from turning left into Aura because it's a right turn. It's the median in it, on MLK. There was concern that it reduced the stacking of people turning left off of MLK onto SD's. And then the other part was, is it actually wide enough for, perceived for pedestrians to cross and have a refuge to get to the BRT station on the other side? So you're living in Aura, you want to walk across MLK, and to get there, that, that's going to be quite an expanse. So how long is that median? What does it do to stack it? And you might not have the answers at this moment, but I know DOT is here and you can talk with them. But that was a safety concern as well.
Yes, yes. I, I may ask if he's comfortable. If, if our traffic engineer, Earl O'Ellen, might want to address that. But if not, that might be some things we need to huddle with the, the, the town transportation folks on and the, and also the, the folks at the HBD who did the TIA.
Okay. So we'll let you come back with that one.
Thank you.
And I know Bergen would have a knowledge of that. I'm not sure. So the question is also about where the future BRT stop would be located on the southbound side and would, and, and I don't know if this is a Chuck Edwards question about would having another, moving the crosswalk further south from Shadowwood, is that getting too close to the intersection of SD's and MLK? I, I don't know. That's a question that Bergen and Chuck Edwards may be able to help us with.
Judy, this, this is Bergen. Good me, good evening, everybody. In terms of the median, I don't have specifications for how wide it's going to be. But I don't think that we're expecting that to be a location where people are going to be crossing. I think we're still hoping that they're going to cross at the existing mid-block crosswalk with the RRFB because that's in between the two existing bus stops. I think that when BRT comes, depending on where the stations end up, that's something that we can look at. But for the next few years, I think that we're not, we're hoping that people won't cross there since there's going to be the existing crosswalk and the new crosswalk, the high visibility with pedestrian signals at the MLK SD's intersection.
Okay. If, so then I'll ask for the developer to bring us back the length of that median and what it does to the left turners from MLK onto SD's for next time. Bergen, while you're here, a lot of concerns around the standards of the pedestrian and street infrastructure that we're putting in, the improvements along SD's, the planting strip in particular. SD's is a tree-lined street. We are providing seven feet of a planting strip and moving down to five. Seems kind of counterproductive there. I understood the presentation and I saw that we were also reduced the sidewalk and I think the bike lane stays the same. But I understand the sidewalk being reduced a little bit and wanting to have more green space. But again, wanting to have more green space and aligning with our town standards of at least a planting strip that allows for the large trees to grow back and to have more trees overall in the project was a concern. So this would give reasoning to increase the shade output and climate activity, but also just the feel of the area there. Just so you know, several of us have made the trip over to Hillstone to, or Trilogy as it's called now, to see the planting strip, the side, the bike lane, the sidewalk, the distance to the stoops and the feel there. And again, shade trees were one of the most important components there. And the ability to sustain the, the plantings, the trees and other plantings. I think you've delved into the stormwater. I would just wanted to hear back from our own stormwater staff that they understood that the proposal now is above our standards. If they have anything to add to that after seeing the new proposal.
I have nothing else. I have not seen any revised design. So until that time, I can review it. I, I can't really comment on how they're meeting their commitment.
But a hundred-year flood is above our standard of twenty-five years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Surface parking was a, a huge concern. You've addressed some of it. We've talked about impervious surfaces and maybe especially around the Central Park, the parking spaces that you're talking about. Could they actually be impervious so that someday if they're not needed, they could actually be replanted as trees? It's a little harder to jackhammer up. Concrete that's been laid out for parking spaces, little easier if there's impervious surface there already. Could you answer if that's an option?
You mean pervious?
Sorry. Going to mix pervious and impervious together. You just have to go with the flow here.
Yes. So yes, as I mentioned, we've committed to using a, a combination of above-ground measures. And, and, and that location for pervious pavers actually seems a good one to us as well.
Okay. And I wanted our staff to verify the impervious component currently stands at sixty-six point one. Is that what you had, percent? And our staff has verified that.
Correct. And we've, we understand there's been a little bobble of that number in, in different, in different places. It's represented slightly different because of nuances in how things are measured. And without getting into too much depth, so our ordinance, the Land Use Management Ordinance, measures based on gross land area. So it's an area of the, the land area plus ten percent. There's other calculations that are based on the, this, and I don't know the right words, but the storage of the basin areas, which may slightly be different than the land area of the property. So that percentage may, depending upon, I know in the stormwater report, it shows up a little bit differently because it's based on a slightly different measurement, which is not the standard that we use in our ordinance. So they will meet the standard of the ordinance, maximum of seventy percent impervious.
That's correct, Judy. Thank you. We will meet that and we'll demonstrate that at ZCP.
Okay. And can you verify the height of the four-story apartment buildings? That you talked about a scale of some sorts that we have a reference point to?
If you give me a minute, I'll, I'll get those numbers from our architect.
All right, council members, I open it back up to you for clarifying questions. And then we will hear from our colleague, Miss Tegman. When is Ryan?
I just wanted to clarify, I appreciate the, the change to having onsite units. I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that that required re, re figuring of the townhouses onsite, all of them, not just the affordable. So can you talk about what has changed with the townhouse design? And how many townhouses there are in the current plan?
Sure. No, nothing has changed on the design. The number of townhouses in the current plan will, the, the, the plan that you've seen will, will not change. We'll simply make seven of those townhouses the affordable townhouses.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm confused. I thought you had said before that that wasn't possible with the current design, so I thought they were changing. So there, go ahead.
We're not adding, we're not adding townhouses to the plan. We're simply making seven of the townhouses affordable townhouses.
And how many total townhouses?
There were, you go back to that number. Excuse me. Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. And the, the affordable ones are the same design and same as, as the non-affordable. So they're all identical. Is that right?
There's a, there's a, there's a block of townhouses at the eastern end of the plan. Those are the ones that will become the affordable townhouses. I'm not sure if they're the same size or slightly smaller, but we can verify that for you.
Okay, thanks. And so I don't want to sound ungrateful at, at all. I really appreciate the collaboration on this, but that's not fifteen percent of the units. Is, can you speak to why not?
What would be fifteen?
Well, I, I can do the math, but you're not offering fifteen percent. And that's with the inclusionary zoning.
Right. I, I believe, I believe it would be eight. I just did my calculator as well. So if, 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 if eight is a better answer, then eight is the answer. How is that?
And I think the, the half becomes the payment in lieu. If staff could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's, that's what it says.
Yes, we'll, 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 we'll commit to eight. And going back to the mayor's question, no, it wasn't the mayor's question. The residential bill, the four-story buildings are forty-four feet tall. That is the height.
Thanks. That's all my questions.
Ms. Ryan, and then Mr. Win, and then Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. I noticed in your presentation, you had reworked the road section that you had done, and you are now showing the, the bike and pet improvements on the north side of Estes the same, matching the ones that are further down Estes, east of Somerset. Does that represent staff's opinion on what's appropriate there?
It does. I, I think that we had always expected the improvements along the Aura frontage to match what was along the rest of the project.
Okay, thank you. I, I want to talk about the woodlands a little bit, the RCD area that you've got. Will there be access down actually into the wetlands? Will it be fenced like a detention basin? I looked on the plans. I didn't see a lot of detail on that.
No, the only fencing we're proposing that you may have seen in one of the renderings is around one of the little dog park areas up there. So it, it will not be fenced. We are actually proposing that it'll be wide open. If folks want to walk down in there, they're happy to do it. We're actually going to be providing a little boardwalk crossing of it for folks who want to experience it, but not necessarily get their shoes wet.
Right. Kudos for that. I think that that's a really smart decision, not to, not to fence people off from that natural area. So thumbs up on that one. And I think that the mayor's point about pervious pavements, I know we've had discussions about at some point, if we don't need so much parking, maybe trees can replace it. So any, I agree with her, any place that you can either use pervious pavement now and then, you know, pluck out later and make tree islands or whatever. I think that might be a good kind of transitional plan for the future. So just. kind of transitional plan for the future. So, um, just, I, I acknowledge your willingness to do that. We appreciate it. Um, and
Future parklets.
Yeah. No, I think that's great. Um, and have you in your career have pretty good luck with maintaining that pervious pavement? I know that in, in early days, people used to kind of be worried about maintenance and them clogging up and not functioning is, is the technology better now than it was?
It, it is. There's actually companies around now with, uh, vacuum trucks that will, uh, sweep the, uh, the fines out of the pervious pavers, uh, so that they don't, uh, they continue to percolate, if that makes sense.
It does. Yeah. Thank you very much. That's all.
Mr. Win and Ms. Anderson.
Uh, gotcha. Thank you. Um, for the affordable housing townhomes, you mentioned that they were all on the east side of the property. So are they, just so I'm understanding, are they all grouped together or are the affordable ones going to be spread throughout the townhomes?
I'm going to let, uh, the person who's been working harder on this than I have and more knowledgeable is, is Susannah Dancy. I'm going to ask her to chime in just for a minute and maybe describe those in a little bit more detail. Susannah, would you be willing to do that?
Uh, yes. Um, hey, good evening, everyone. Um, there are a, a, a couple of things that I'd like to clarify. Um, first Karen, um, your, your question about whether the townhouse, uh, townhouses have changed, that's very much in flux right now. Um, we are trying to adjust the townhomes so that we can get them to where the affordable units and the market rate units, uh, are compatible, blend in together where they're indistinguishable from the outside. But, uh, it is not our original plan to, uh, to offer the much larger townhomes is being scaled back so that we can, um, again, have it so that the, the affordable units are indistinguishable from the outside, from the, from the other units and that they blend together very, uh, in a fluid way. So that leads me to, to, um, tie to your question about whether they're off by, whether, what the location is. Again, we are still working with some of this. Um, initially, we had looked at the, at the, the section of townhomes. As you come in the MLK entrance, it would be the section of townhomes, uh, to the right, closest to the Village Center. Part of the reason that we had identified that as being, uh, the optimal location for the, for the affordable townhomes was the proximity to the, to transit. As well as, um, some other kind of features that, uh, allow us to, to make them a bit more affordable. But now that we have changed the townhouse plan, that stuff is still being worked through. We don't have, we, you know, it's only been a couple of weeks since we, we changed directions fairly significantly on this project or on, on the townhome component of this. And so we have, um, uh, we're still working through that, but, but we are committed to having them, uh, be, it to be a, a seamless as possible. Does that answer your question?
Gotcha. And could you just clarify, and if you're not able to, um, let me know, but if they're indistinguishable from the outside, kind of, will they just have like less bedrooms on the inside or kind of what will the, the scaled back part be?
Yeah. Typically the scaled back stuff is the finishes on the inside. It's things like, uh, Formica counters instead of granite counters, um, perhaps some of the interior trim and such. So those are the ways that you, you, um, can bring the construction costs down to where they are affordable units. In the past, um, the, the vertical construction, the, the land was paid for by the developer, the land and development. There was paid for by the developer, but then the vertical construction, uh, is paid for by the, the person who's buying the, by the affordable home buyer. And the way that you make that work is just by using, um, by using, uh, carpet instead of hardwoods, you know, some of those things, the, the less expensive, expensive finishes on the inside. But the townhomes would still be three-bedroom townhomes. They would still have the same number of baths. Those things would be similar. It's just that some of the interior finishes are not, um, are, are less expensive finishes rather than, than, um, it's so that we can meet those affordability things. But that said, um, with the cost of construction and particularly since these townhomes will be larger, they'll be three, three-bedroom townhomes. Uh, the cost of some of the cost of the construction, the vertical construction will be borne by the developer. And that was part of why we had to, to, um, tweak the formula in order to make the finances work to be able to provide those affordable housing units onsite rather than offsite.
Gotcha. And so will those details on the affordable housing plan, like what you were just talking about, will that be finalized before this comes back to us next time?
Well, that, that information is, or those details are usually worked through, um, with the affordable housing partner on those, on those projects that I typically, or to my knowledge, has not been something that council got into the weeds on. Um, and that that's just worked through with the, um, uh, with the affordable housing provider.
Gotcha. Um, and then my next question was about the signalization from our NC DOT contact. It sounds like we will have to do some study to prove warranting that signalization in the future. Um, would the applicant consider or commit to paying for that study? I imagine that's not a free study. Unless it is staff, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh, yeah, yes. I, I, I think that's something that actually DOT takes on, but we would certainly provide whatever additional engineering assistance Chuck's team would need to make the determination if the, uh, the warrants i- is the term that they use are, are there to, uh, support a traffic signal. So yes.
Gotcha. And those are all my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson, Ms. Gu, Mr. Boency.
Thanks.
Ms. Parker.
There had been a, an idea about, um, being able to transition, um, some of the space. I'm guessing on the MLK frontage to, um, to retail in the future, or I guess commercial. Um, so is that still on the table or is that possible to have that be convertible in the future, you know? If and when the market kind of likes it?
Yeah, yes, yes. That's, that's, that's not only on the table. We're committing to that. In fact, I think the, uh, the staff report will, uh, will, will reflect, uh, additional commercial square footage than, uh, our original application. And we are committing to additional ground floor spaces in that part of the, uh, of the community to be convertible in the future if the demand is there. Yes, ma'am.
And so I'm assuming that means some sort of different construction type. Well, anyway.
Yeah, yes, yes. Our architects will figure that out. Yes.
Yeah, I don't need to get into all that, but just that that's going to be ready to go and, and how, um, how will that happen? Like, how do we know? Or how do we ensure that that's, that that happens when it's possible?
Yeah, I, I, we, we see it as demand-driven. So, um, you know, if, 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 as we hope our, our relatively small twelve thousand five hundred square foot retail complex is so highly successful that our developer has other, um, restaurants, small neighborhood retail users knocking on their door wanting space, then, uh, then that would be the time they would have to start looking at, hmm, this, this makes, this is a good business decision to go ahead and start converting those spaces, uh, now. So that's, that's how we envisioned it happening.
So really what, what we're agreeing to then is just the convertibility. Um, and the, the construction type so that it's possible.
Correct.
Okay. Um, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, there, uh, I was one of the people who, who went to go check out Hillstone or Trilogy or whatever we're calling it, but, um, I think something that, that really was kind of striking was the lack of shade, um, and the, the lack of feeling green. And so I think for a number of reasons, not just character, but really, um, if, if we want to get people out of their cars, I think they can't be, it, it can't be so, uh, hot and sunny and unshaded. So I'm just wondering, one of the ideas that I've heard is putting um, some additional trees, um, not just in the planting strip, getting more in there, but also in the little courtyards and the frontage of Estes. Um, to try and get more trees in there. I'm wondering if that's possible.
Excuse me, muted. Um, a- a- absolutely. I can pull it up if you'd like me to, but, uh, the, uh, the, 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 the plan, the site plan that we've shown actually shows a double row of street trees, one on the street side of the multi-use path and the other one on the, the other side. So we will have double the number of street trees other than the ones that would, that thirty-five feet on center in the, along the back of the curb.
Okay. And so where would they be? The ones on the aura side?
Yeah, they would, they would be, um, uh, on the, uh, the opposite side of the, uh, the sidewalk, so north of the sidewalk. Uh, and there would be additional plantings as well in those. If you remember, we have those, you know, inset courtyards because of the way it's articulated. So yes, we're gonna, we're gonna plant that heavily because we also want, uh, the people who live in those, uh, in those, in those houses to sit out there and being the south side. Um, I would want shade and we're going to give them shade.
Yeah, it's going to be sunny for sure. Um, and is there a way to get more of the street trees along the street as well for, um, bike ped?
Uh, a a- as in closer together or?
Right. Right. And I don't, this is not my area. I don't know how close you can get them to each other, um, before you kill them. But I'm just wondering if we can, um, if we can get them closer together so we can get more.
Yeah, yeah. So what I'd like, what, so what we'd like to do, going back to my, uh, uh, the presentation, when we talked about the, the street yard and the bike path and the, um, uh, you know, the planting verge and all that sort of thing. Um, um, I think I'd love to, for our team to sit down with, with the urban forester, the bike ped folks, uh, and, and Brian Peterson and come up with a, in a, in a appropriate shady horticulturally, um, supportive design. How's that for a bunch of words? Yeah.
It's a lot of words and I know them all individually. No, I'm kidding. Um, well, I, I think that would be great if, um, if we could just get as much green in there as possible and as much large trees, not, you know, little sad, sad ones. Um, how do we, um, can you tell me about the programming of the green space? And, um, I know that Southern Village has partially been really successful in that because there's just been so much effort and because, um, the, the person who created it lives there and, and just puts a lot of care and feeding into it. I'm wondering what that looks like and how we guarantee that there's really excellent programming there.
Yeah, I, 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 I think to be honest, I don't know that we've put a ton of thought yet in how to program the space. Uh, we've put a lot of thought in though, and how big the space needs to be so that it is programmable uh, for various and sundry functions, uh, be them, you know, be the open play, small concerts, big concerts, uh, food truck rodeos, uh, plays, movies, all of that sort of thing. So, uh, and I'm sure that's something that the, uh, the developers will want to take on because just like Southern Village, that leads to the success of the community, that there's always something going on there. Yeah. Places for people to come together. So we will work on that.
Okay. Um, and is, I've heard mixed stories about condos in North Carolina and the difficulty of having condos. I was just wondering, but we did see them at Columbia Street Annex Project. So I'm wondering if there's any possibility of mixing, of having maybe the, the front of MLK or I don't know, the smaller building of the apartments or something. Um, having that be condos just to have more, um, for sale opportunities.
Yeah, we, we have looked at that and, uh, the, the, for, for, for various unsundry reasons, I will say that, uh, condos, uh, ca- w- will not be part of this project. Uh, they're, they're just, they provide challenges from a financing ownership standpoint and that sort of thing. So, uh, um, but no, no condos. Sorry about that.
Okay. Um, and my last question is just a follow-up to some previous questions about the affordable units. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood that the affordable units are going to be indistinguishable on the outside to the traditional market rate units. Is that right? And that the only difference would be interior finishes?
Uh, yeah, uh, Susannah, can you, uh, can you confirm that it's the case?
Yes, all of the, um, just all of the, we expect that there will be some variation between the condos or not, not the condos. We're not having condos.
Condos, okay.
That we expect that there will be variation among the townhomes, but the, um, but they will all fit together and it won't be, you won't be able to say, oh, those are the, those are the affordable ones. So for example, some will have, uh, some of the, and it's just the nature of the development and the variation that's in it is that some of them will have, uh, uh, the ones that are over by the woodlands will have front-loaded garages. The ones that are over by the village, um, the village center will not have garages. So there's variation among all of them. Uh, we expect that the, that the affordable ones will be indistinguishable from the others, but that's not to say that all of the townhomes will be this exactly the same. There will be variation, but you won't be able to tell which ones are affordable and which ones are, uh, are market rate.
And they will be distributed throughout. So it won't be like the ones, the affordable ones will be the ones without garages?
We're, we're, again, we're working through that, but I, I would expect that there will be a variety of types that, that the affordable ones will have, uh, have varieties, have.
Understood. There's no, there won't be a pattern in any way to which ones are affordable is what you're saying.
That's not the intent.
Interior amenities. Okay. Um, and and I heard we're going up to eight in order to meet the fifteen percent. Is that right?
The, um, the we, fifteen percent is seven and a half. The way that the formula works is that it is the number of units, the number of market rate units times fifteen percent. So if we have fifty market rate units times fi- times fifteen percent, that's seven point five units. Um, it is.
Point five rounds up to one, the last time I checked.
Well, Dan has said that we will, um, so I guess we will.
Super.
I finally got my way, Suzanne. All right.
I like this marriage or whatever's happening in this marriage. Okay. Um, I think that is all my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Gu, then Mr. Boency, then Mr. Parker.
Okay. Well, I think that what today, of course, we have talked about, um, the traffic issues in that area, many I mean, in multiple different occasions, but it seems like the community still, they're the largest concern from, from my, my, uh, listening to the community is that traffic. So I don't, I asked, uh, oh, I I mean, from what they're telling me, I seems like we're not, uh, communicating clear enough of what kind of traffic situation is going to be. So I asked the questions, I think in the past, there's several, um, public hearings about the queue lengths. Um, I understand that there is this, uh, summary statistics that in the traffic, uh, and the townwide transportation model about the queue lengths. Um, well, it seems like the, the, in some of the area, well, especially with the build, with the aura builder situations, especially in some of the intersections like uh, the SS to strive in the Somerset. Um, there is pretty significant, uh, increase in queue lengths. So I think of course, I understand that, um, the increase probably is going to be expected. But the question, I think the, the community is worried about is how bad that's going to be. So is there any way that you can explain with regard to like whether the, how bad the congestion could be or will be, um, both at the intersection of Estes and MLK and the Estes and the Somerset? Is there any way that you can communicate with the community and explaining that how bad the congestion, okay, don't, I do not just say level E, level F. I don't know. I, I mean, the, the community have a difficult time to really translate that into their experience, the traffic experiences of how bad the congestion is going to be, how frequent that congestion is going to happen. So like how far that like how backup the, how, how long the queue is going to be, how long the backup is going to be. If you, is there any way? I don't know if our town engineer or our consultant or some other, uh, traffic engineer that you may hire or can explain that and translate what your findings to what people will experience or they're worried they will experience on that intersection. I don't know if you, if, if that's a question that you would be able to shed some light on.
So the town's, uh, traffic consultant, Craig Shaploo, which HNTB is here. And, um, I think that would be a question that we would, uh, hopefully he would be able to help respond to.
Um, hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Um, so again, our role in this process was to, uh, take the townwide traffic model, which we had been developing over the past several months and do a scenario test. Uh, that was requested to above and beyond what the traffic impact study, um, went through was to add, uh, kind of a what-if analysis if all of the developable land around the or, uh, project area was built out by around the Ora project area was built out by 2024, which is the same year that the TIA analyzed its data and information. And then add, of course, all of the potential and planned larger developments around town into the townwide model and run that as sort of a even more conservative look at what might happen along Estes Drive. And assume that all the Ora-related improvements were, were built in the town project to also improve Estes Drive, what, what was, was in place. And so I guess maybe one number to, to get a, a, a clear idea of what would happen after all that was said and done was on westbound Estes Drive in, in the afternoon peak hour, the existing queue lengths can get really, really long, over, well over a thousand feet. Obviously, and, and that's due to the fact that the signal is, at MLK is, is right at capacity and cannot process all the different traffic movements there in its current configuration and lineage. And again, our results showed that if the Ora project was built and the town improvement project along Estes was completed. And even if you added all the effects of the other background traffic developments in the central west area, if that was built and Ora also was built. Just looking at the numbers, our maximum queue lengths were around, the maximum, maximum queue length was around 500 feet. And so what, what that's saying is, is basically at, at the worst condition in the PM peak hour, with all that additional road capacity along Estes Drive westbound, the existing queues would be reduced from, you know, whatever they are, well over a thousand feet now, to a length that would be processed every signal cycle. So every time the, the signal comes green on Estes Drive westbound, it would clear out. At, at worst, it would clear out. And so again, reducing that queue length to 500 feet, when we think of where the Ora driveway is proposed to be, I think somewhere around 800, 900 feet away from the signal. What, what it was looking like in the model was it wasn't blocking the Ora drive and it certainly wasn't blocking anywhere upstream all the way to Caswell. And so i- i- if that makes sense in terms of a, of a description of, you know, what some of our model results would, would, you know, show in reality, that's, that's about the best explanation I can give as to some of the queue issues.
Craig, just thank you for being here with us, but I'll make sure you're clear. That's including adding the additional left turn lane from STS onto MLK and an additional right-hand turn lane at that. Those are the improvements besides the bike ped that we were discussing that you're sharing as part of this new, the modeling situation.
Yes, that's correct.
So an additional left turn lane and an additional right-hand turn lane at that intersection are what make the true difference?
Well, an extension of the existing right turn lane.
Sorry, yes, an extension of the existing right turn lane.
Yeah, exactly. And then a re-timing of the signal to account for those changes, which makes the signal more efficient, which allows the whole signal to operate better, including the other approaches. So.
Yep. Well, I think that's very helpful. So you're saying that if we implement all the changes and improvements to the street and roads and the traffic lights, well, at least from the modeling, I'm not saying modeling is 100% of what's going to happen. But at least from this modeling is we do not see that the congestion is going to back up all the way to our exit all blocked the way that the full people to exit from the Somerset. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
That's correct. The queue that would be stopped at the Estes MLK intersection would not, according to our model results, block those two side streets.
Okay, so that's very important. So, and then I also see that in your modeling, there is this, another intersection is Estes and the Somerset Drive. The current basis, the base scenario, the basic current situation, the queue lengths is around, I mean, the AM and at the PM, the queue lengths is, I mean, in the AM is around 25, in the PM is around 100. So let's say a car is about 15 feet long. So it's just the two or three cars to about five, six, 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 seven cars. And then with the buildup, I think it seems like here is the most significant increase because the queue lengths can go all the way. Let me make sure I read that correctly. Yeah, about like 250, 275, about 300, some readings around that. So, um, do you see that as a concern? So let's say 300, I'm just rounding, 300 and they, so let's say a car is 15 feet again. So that's, that means 20 cars. Can you imagine a scenario that at the Somerset intersection, there are 20 cars piled up at that intersection? Oh, is that?
I, I, I think again, remember that those results were for the scenario where Somerset would have the fourth leg of the intersection that would accommodate traffic from all the potential new development or redevelopment of the central west area. And, and, and so again, I think in that study, in, in the scenario that we looked at, the intent was to say, well, what's kind of a what-if scenario of kind of the worst, most conservative case? And so again, at that point, and I think Mr. Edwards alluded to this, in the future, if things do change at the Somerset Drive intersection, the signal may be warranted there, but given the current conditions, it likely is not.
Okay, I got you. So you're saying that the current situation, based on your, again, all our discussion based on modeling, I'm not saying that anyone can predict the future with 100% accuracy. But that is expected. But from your modeling results, it shows that with that, all the improvement and of course, the additional construction of Aura, there is, it's manageable at this time. But if assuming all the other developments that's planned at the central west or the other parcels being developed, then that intersection is more problematic. So at that time, we may need other kind of adjustment or some other ways to alleviate the traffic. Is that correct?
Right. Again, it was a what-if analysis. And so as those other properties are developed, I would assume that again, the, the townwide model would be updated to reflect changing conditions. And then we'd have a more accurate representation at that, you know, at that particular time and, and, and it probably would merit a look again at, at improvements at the intersection.
Well, thank you very much. I tried to not to take too much time. So, so from, uh, uh, Dan, from your presentation, you talk about this 100-year stormwater. This sounds like very impressive. Well, I, I, well, I may not be an expert in that area, but it sounds very impressive. But how are you going to verify that? How, is there any monitoring system and say that, like, monitoring whether or not actually the stormwater, whatever the procedure or equipment or facility you're going to put in place? Like how effective it is? Or is that a, a rechain or the, you know, the, the, the effectiveness that you are promising here?
Oh, no, great, great question. And, 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 and typically historically, there's not monitoring done, but you know, if, if the town wanted to do that, they certainly could. It's, you know, I, I'm a landscape architect, not a civil engineer. And I used to say stormwater isn't rocket science. Well, folks have turned stormwater design into rocket science these days. That's literally where it is. So our engineers will work with staff, they will show the numbers. Alicia already ran through sort of some of those early ones that, you know, the watershed, the in-out, all that sort of thing. So the, the, the proof will be in the, in the calculations that are done in the, in the, in the manner that the town stipulates they be done, provided to the town, to show the town that we will manage that, that 100-year storm. So that's, that's how it will be done.
Okay. So you're saying that this 100-year storm is just not words, like it looked impressive on the, on the condition zoning agreement, a- a- actually something that you're committed to. You are willing, well, let's say in the future events, let's say if there's some stormwater issues that neighbors or communities noticed and our town do some monitoring or evaluation and, and the property owner is committed to make sure that it reached that 100-year stormwater standard.
Yes, we are committed to managing the 100-year storm. Yes.
Great. Okay. So another question, I think probably hopefully it's not that big. So, well, lots of people talk, well, I think everyone agree in the town of Chapel Hill, we care about our green spaces and the tree canopy. And I noticed that in your drawings and diagrams, that there are all the trees that line up all the like sidewalks and I think that's, that looks, I mean, again, impressive and a big improvement comparing to other developments that we have seen around the town. So, but I also see that there are some joints that have trees that on top of the parking deck, with, with, what does that mean?
Yes, yes.
How are you going to include that? Yeah.
Yes, that we, we will actually install some planters in that upper level of the parking deck to provide some shade trees. We're going above and beyond. We are doing that.
Oh, okay. So it's planters. Okay. Okay. So, um, so my last question, which is the parking, or I've been talking about parking about almost every project, but I think especially for this one, I understand that you use, use the, you know, different criterias that we have been parking standards for different projects. And you think, you're saying that it's close to Blue Hill District. But on the other hand, Blue Hill District is not a transit-oriented development. So I think that we are apparently we're, we're hoping that there is a different standards that, that Aura will be able to establish for the transit-oriented development. So is there anything? You know, there are lots of conversations and the research has done, done in this area. So I, I heard that lots of improvement you already listed. I'm going to, I'm not going to repeat. But one of them I see you that haven't mentioned is the decoupling of parking and the housing. That that has been mentioned a lot of times and in different places and showing that they're effective, that prevent incentive for the people who not going to drive, then they, they're going to be like a discount in their rental or the purchasing price for their like townhomes. Is there something that the property owner will be considered to?
We, we have not discussed that, but if, if that's something that we could maybe keep a little open-ended and.
Actually, Dan, I'm going to interrupt. We have discussed that. Sorry, let me turn this back on. We have discussed that and we are, uh, we're fine with charging for parking. And so that the parking is not included in the rent of the, of the apartments.
Oh, so you're saying that for this development, the rental, that like someone can actually just pay the rental part of, for the housing part of the rental and does not just automatically everyone pay for the parking? Is that what you're saying?
They will be charged separately.
Oh, so if someone need parking spaces, they actually pay extra?
Yes, I, I believe so, yes.
So in, in.
It has some operational challenges to it, but yes, we, we are glad to pay for parking.
Okay. Well, that's new information, but.
Yeah, well, we, we, we've been working through these and in response to trying to, to, to address, address your concerns. But yes, the, the, we're fine with charging separately for parking.
Need to keep moving along. Mr. Buynce, then Mr. Parker?
Yep. So I've got two questions. My first one, what, these two questions relate to the staff portion of the presentation in the beginning, with respect to the stormwater. Just practically speaking, ultimately, could, could you tell us what those peak flow reductions would mean for nearby residents?
The peak flow reductions are just so that the existing condition is not exasperated. They are showing site reductions for specific storm events, but the idea and intention of the regulation is such that and no existing condition would be exasperated from the new development. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it does. And, and, and with what the applicant has proposed, and, and I know you, you said, Ms. Goldstein, you haven't had a chance to, to look at it, but essentially what they're proposing is, is a further reduction, correct, for folks that are impacted maybe downstream.
So what they're proposing is not just addressing the one, two and 25-year storm events, but also looking at the peak flows for the 50 and 100 design storm events.
Right. I, I, I'm sorry, I, I just, there, there, there's some numbers being said. I just, I just wanted to just kind of get a practical sense of what, what that'll mean for, for folks on the ground.
Yeah, and these requirements are for peak flow rates.
Okay. All right, I'll move on to my next question. So about the traffic, there is a pedestrian crossing that was shown that was over by the intersection of Somerset and STS Drive. If, if a light was put in, I'm wondering about what happens to that, if, if that's something that gets, that goes away and gets folded into the traffic signalization there, what, what would happen to that pedestrian crossing?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Buynce, did you say the crossing at Somerset and STS or the site driveway in STS? Sorry.
Yeah, so, so there is, I think in Ms. Johnson's portion of the presentation, there was this, a slide that, that showed pedestrian crossings kind of along Estes Drive going towards Caswell. There, there was one that was indicated near Somerset and STS. I'm wondering about what happens to that if, if we get full traffic signal, signalization there at some point.
Yeah. So if a traffic signal went in at Somerset and STS, the crossing that would go in as part of the STS Drive Bike Ped Project would sort of be incorporated into that. So instead of the flashing yellow lights, it would have a regular pedestrian signal that would turn to walk when the light turned red.
Okay, cool. Thanks. That's all I got.
Mr. Parker?
Okay, thank you. A few of my questions have been answered already, so thank you for that. As regards traffic, you know, intersection signalization and warrants, I know that my understanding at least is that what's looked at typically are related to cars and level of car traffic. But do the warrants for traffic lights also take into account or can, you know, pedestrian bike safety be taken into account so that it may not be warranted because there's not enough cars, but for a number of reasons that a light may be needed or warranted because of pedestrian considerations or movement conflict considerations or bicycle considerations? And are those things routinely looked at in making the decision about signaling an intersection? And if not, can be?
So Chuck, I'm hoping you might be able to chime in on that.
Sure, be glad to. So again, the MUTCD has, I believe, nine signal warrants. Most of them are related to motor vehicle volumes and, and those volumes, how they occur over a period of time, be it the peak heavy as time or over some more extended period of time. But there also are warrants specific to pedestrians. That also has to do with pedestrian volumes. In other words, the number, number of pedestrians that are, that are going through that intersection over a period of time. And that would be something that would have to be studied further. The, the study that was prepared by VHB is all based on the peak hours. So the traffic volumes that they are looking at in their analysis are for that, that peak time in the morning, noon and evening. And so because of that, they're limited as to how extensive they can perform a traffic study. But it is common practice and appropriate with a, a study done for the development that you would look at the peak hour warrant, which is one of those many warrants. It's typically one of the easiest ones to achieve. So if that one is not met, very likely the other volume-related warrants will, will not be met either. But as far, the, the study did not include any specific information about pedestrian volumes. And so that would be something that would need to be studied further. And very likely we need to be studied after the development so that you could actually take physical counts of actual pedestrians based on, based on those patterns that occur and those volumes that occur. But yes, there, there is a warrant, but again, it is based on, on pedestrian volume.
And as regards, you know, the considerations, so I just want to be clear, is, is it the plan? So I understand that, you know, we're looking potentially in the future when other developments take place as then perhaps justifying a traffic light either at. As then perhaps justifying a traffic light either at Somerset or at the entrance to the aura. But one of the things that has been shown and was included in the uh traffic model was also the construction of a new road. That would make the Somerset intersection a full four-way. Does that road have to be built before we could ever consider putting a traffic light at Somerset? That's a tough road to build.
I'll I'll take that. I think the um, the. The general answer is, is that um, that additional traffic volumes, whether it be regardless of mode. Would would have to occur uh before you would really meet any warrants for signalization. That could be a fourth leg at Somerset, uh, which was included, I believe, in Mr. Schaeffler's analysis and in that what if scenario. Um, but also and and also as part of that scenario, he he modeled uh potential future. Traffic volumes from future development based on some assumptions. Um, so I think that. Generally, there would have to be additional volume, and again, the fourth leg would factor into that, but not necessarily. Not necessarily, but it it's certainly a fourth leg there would certainly change how traffic operated with the various movements there.
Okay, so then tell me, uh, if this is a reasonable conclusion. Is that unless, you know, the traffic modeling that's been done so far is significantly in error. And the traffic volumes, you know, once just the aura is built or significant. Or in, you know, currently envisioned. Until there's other development, I don't know how much, but until there's significant other development there or background levels of traffic increase substantially. There won't be a signal at Somerset. Is essentially arbitrary as a way just to make the model work, but nobody knows whether the, you know, the. Three or four additional developments will happen by twenty twenty four, twenty twenty six or ever. So. Is there, you know, there's no other way, even if the town, you know, was, you know, clearly. The developer or developers are willing to pay for all a part of the light, is there no way that that light really ever gets built absent a lot of future development there?
Well, I think that uh, again, if we're looking at it in the context of this specific development, this specific development. Just based on the analysis, doesn't really uh contribute enough additional traffic volume. To to really drive that warrant from. Yes, um, but to, regardless it. A decision on a signal would need to be supported by additional additional analysis, additional study. And that's, that would need to take place ideally, actually after this development is in place. And traffic is stabilized, uh, after the town's project is done. And let's face it, after the COVID impacts, uh, so so we got a lot of, a lot of things there that would be. That would be influencing that analysis that really need to be cleared away and stabilized before that would be meaningful.
Okay, thank you. I'll just turn my attention to a couple of other, try to be quick about this. So I think. I just clarify, the affordable rentals, those are intended to be fully managed by the developer. Whoever ultimately owns the uh rental buildings, and those would be floating units, they're not going to be dedicated units in any. But it will just be based on availability at any given point.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And um. The other, I think my le- my last question is in, in terms of the road network. That exists, you know, that will exist in within the development. Is that going, maintenance of that, will that be a town responsibility or will that be the responsibility to developers?
They are uh private streets, so that will be the developer's responsibility.
Okay, that's good here. And last question about affordable housing, will or housing in general, will the rentals accept vouchers?
Some operational challenges with uh with accepting vouchers. I'm sorry, can you, my connection seemed bad. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes, I can anyway.
There there are some operational uh challenges with vouchers, uh, and so we have to look into that a bit further. But it that has a significant operational challenge.